I'd like to welcome you to a meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you've taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Madam President, thank you very much. Usually we start these board meetings with the pledges of allegiance, but we have had a board election and it's now time to install our two newest board members into the College Station ISD Board of Trustees. Each board member will have somebody who will appear to swear them in. The first that we have on the docket is Place Six. Michael Schaefer was re-elected this year and swearing him in will be Representative Cal Casell. Come forward, Cal.
We're gonna do three words at a time.
You ready for this?
Yes, sir.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I
Michael Schaefer.
Do solemnly swear, or... Did we get this right? And affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of office of School Board of Trustee, Place Six, the State of Texas...
He's gotta say all that. We might want to do this like in two, three words at a time.
He's gotta repeat after you.
Repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas...
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas...
I state your name.
I, Michael Schaefer.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Execute the duties of the office...
Faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of School Board Trustee, Place Six.
Of School Board Trustee, Place Six.
Of the State of Texas...
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my... And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well done. For Place Seven, we have our newest board member, Geraldine Nolan, and she is being sworn in by her aunt Suzanne Spears. Suzanne, would you... Oh, and her mom Brenna Briscoe. If you both would come up, I'm sure you'll do a much better job than Representative Casell, but that's alright, so.
So the directions are that we read this and Geraldine repeats it back, correct?
Yes, so probably three, four words at a time, maybe.
I love this. "In the name and by the authority of..."
"In the name and by the authority of..."
"The State of Texas."
"The State of Texas."
"I..."
"I, Geraldine Nolan."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"That I will faithfully..."
"That I will faithfully..."
"Execute the duties of the office..."
"Execute the duties of the office."
"Of School Board Trustee, Place Seven."
"Of School Board Trustee, Place Seven."
"The State of Texas."
"The State of Texas."
"And will, to the best of my ability..."
"And will, to the best of my ability."
"Preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws."
"Of the United States."
"Of the United States."
"And of this state..."
"And of this state."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Okay, Dr. Yocan, we're coming for you in just a minute, but before we do, we're gonna say the pledges of allegiance to the U.S. and state flag. And the people who will be leading us this evening are from A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School and from College Station Middle School. And would Principals Jeff Mann and Oliver Hadnot please come forward and introduce their students to us?
All right, good evening. Jeff Mann, Principal of AMCMS, and with me this evening I have...
Oliver Hadnot, Principal of College Station Middle School.
And I have Abby Garrett and Zachary Wang. And Abby is the president of our eighth grade class. She's our student council president. And Zachary is the president of our NJHS. And I asked both of them before, what do you want to do after high school? And they said, "Go to college." They're going to college, no doubt.
CSMS is represented by Delana Ho, who is a member of our NJHS. She's a vice president. She likes to... She played in the band and she's a member of 4A. Anna Halliburton, she's a president of our NJHS, and she loves to read and draw and work with the CSMS newspaper.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Y'all go stand up for her. That's who you're thanking.
Sure, what would you like to do? We can stand?
You want us to stand?
You want to stand?
Yeah.
Sure. Well, we can do that. While Mrs. Barrett goes and retrieves something right now, we... Mr. Harris, Mr. Vice President, we have one recognition on the table for this evening. And we would like to recognize the distinguished service as School Board Trustee and School Board President, Dr. Valerie Yocan. I have a plaque because it wouldn't be government service if we didn't give you a plaque on the way out the door. But it does say, too, "Dr. Valerie Yocan, for her years of dedicated service to the education of our children. College Station ISD Board of Trustees, 2008 to 2017. Board President, 2011 to 2017." So I'd like to present this to you. I'd just like to say briefly before we get started, and embarrassing you, that it's been a tremendous honor to work with you and to work for you in the years that I have, especially the last three and a half years as superintendent. More than just a board president, you've been a leader and, to me, you've been a mentor and a friend. And your ability to work with myself and the senior staff here and work with the board, rest of the members of the board, to come together as a team and tackle real issues for this community has been outstanding. I know that you, growing up, you moved around a lot. And you talk about that and some of the difficult situations that we go through. But for you and your husband, John, to come and choose this community and settle here and for both of you to pour into the lives of people in your church and this community and this school district has been... We are all better for it. I know personally I am better for it in my position. The school board is better for your service and our community is as well. We are gonna miss you. I will miss you. And we wish you the very best in what's coming forward. And you have a pretty exciting next chapter in your life, which I think Carol's gonna talk about just a little bit.
I've known Valerie a long time.
A long time.
A long time. We've been through a lot together. Little did we know that we would end up on the school board together, but we spent a lot of time on PTO boards together and family time together and neighbors together and so many different things. But these last years on the school board with Valerie have been so rewarding. And I don't know that the community could possibly understand the time that she's given to the schools, to the kids, to the administration. We have a huge hole to fill with her because she gives time that no one sees and time that we just... Things get done and we appreciate that very much. And Valerie, for me personally, you know I love you and you know that I'll keep you close and probably still call you for advice when this last year that I serve... And we all know that I don't like the microphone, by the way. But we do have something to send on your way that we all contributed to, to make sure that the next phase, you're well-prepared. There's a book in there on how to babysit your grandmother. That is quite fascinating. And things in there that will help you when your grandchild comes to see you. And there's even a bag in there when you need to go quickly out to see your grandchild. I think I'm gonna read what we wrote to her. "We chose the book, 'The Giving Tree,' and I don't know if any of you are familiar with this, but the sacrifice that the tree makes for the little boy is much what I think about you and that we think about you." It says, "Valerie, thank you for your countless ways you have served CSISD and the community. Your extraordinary leadership, vision, hard work, and commitment to educating CSIS students each day, each life, each hour is evident. We are grateful for your attention to detail and always expecting a deep level of granularity as we work through the challenges of a fast-scoring school district. While you will be greatly missed, our students, teachers, and staff will benefit from your devoted service for years to come." And this is from your favorite board members, and each has written their own comment. Next.
And personally, I want to thank you and say in front of everyone here how much you've meant to me, but I... They'll all get a chance to say their piece, but also to us as a group. The last, for me, I guess it's been seven and a half years that I've been on the board and you've been there the entire time. And the thing I'm most grateful for was your willingness to sacrifice your time and to put your talents to work for the betterment of our district and our community as a whole. And oftentimes, that was difficult, but I was always appreciative of your willingness to do it. And it's because we, as a group, thought you were the best person for the job. So thank you. That's all. Thank you.
I'll say, "Stand away from the mic." You know, I think, as Quinn put it earlier when we were sitting around the table, you know, when we all got... We know no other way other than you being in charge. And I feel incredibly blessed for that, for the last four years, I guess, that I've been on the board. And I remember the very first time we walked back, my very first school board meeting when we were all sitting around the table at workshop, and I said something in a joking way and you gave me the stink eye and kind of put me in my place about, this is maybe not the right time to say that. And I've learned an enormous amount and I admire you a tremendous amount. I admire you for your intelligence. I admire you for your service. I admire you for the effort, for the amount that you care about the kids in our district. And I would run through a brick wall for you, Valerie. I hope you know that. We appreciate you. We're gonna miss you.
Gotta hurry up and go before everybody says everything. So, we've known each other since our kids were in junior high together and going to junior high parties, but not very well. So when I got on this board, I was terrified of you because you just had your stuff together and you ran the meeting so well. And over the last four years, I've gotten to know you real well and I'm very much gonna miss having you as our leader. It's all we've ever known. And thank you so much for everything you've done. You've helped me grow on this board personally and you have done so much for this district and the kids in it and the administration as well. And so, thank you very much.
Quinn got us... Quinn got us out of the Michael Michael thing. Valerie, I've known you probably 15, 20 years. I've always respected you, but I think the greatest respect that I've saw was with you being on the school board. You challenged us. And the one thing I'm probably gonna miss is you can look at me and probably tell what I'm thinking. And so, there's not a lot of people that can do that. But we're gonna miss you and I think College Station ISD is much better off with your leadership. God bless you.
I think I'd like to say, first of all, if you can look at Michael Schaefer and know what he's thinking, that is a terrifying gift. Like everyone else, you're all I've known here. And, you know, the common theme around the table is the obvious that we are gonna miss you and miss your leadership, miss your friendship. And I realize you're not dying, you're not moving or anything, but the day-to-day or month-to-month connection's not gonna... It's not gonna be the same. And there's probably gonna be a grieving process, I think, for a lot of us up here. You've talked a lot the last couple of years about helping College Station go from a small district to a big district. And since you've been here for a decade, we've doubled in size. And the changes that you have been so instrumental in leading are astounding, the number of schools that have been built. And again, it's not just about buildings, but I think it was Carol that mentioned your focus on education. Every kid, making sure every one of them was taken care of. And that was always at the forefront of every decision that you made. And I think, Carol, you also mentioned about how the community doesn't know how much time you have spent. I would submit that we don't know how much time you've spent. We sit really close to you, but I know, and this sounds like such a cop-out, but it's true, my confession, you know, after a meeting, it's not uncommon for someone from the media to come up and ask us a question, but we can't speak for the board, so we could say, "Go talk to her." I'm gonna miss being able to do that, just to be one of you now. But thank you for your leadership, for your heart. You have led us with, I mean, with strength, with compassion. I would say intelligence, but it's more than that. You've led with wisdom. And it's been said before, but it doesn't make it any less true. We have been blessed. And thank you and enjoy the little one.
Okay, so if I wasn't overwhelmed before, totally overwhelmed now, I just want to say, same for me. You're the only thing I know too, because from sitting in the audience for almost two years now. You know, I've watched you and I want to thank you for leaving me in great hands. You know, you helped develop this, so thank you.
I'd like to see who's gonna haul me out of here. So first of all, I want to thank everybody that sat and listened to this. I'm a little bit overwhelmed, but I want to thank the community for giving me the opportunity to serve. I wasn't gonna cry anymore, but I may. Someone asked why I started to be on the board and I shared in the newspaper, my son said, "Mom, you stood in front of the school board in the early 90s and told them they were stupid." And I did. And it's probably on KPTX, if you want to go back and look at the films. Carol and I had kids in year-round school. This is back in the really olden days. And we thought that it was something that worked well for parents that worked outside the home and we thought that the school district should continue it. And, you know, out of the wisdom of how much it costs, they decided not to. But Vincent came home and said, "Mom, you should run for school board." And so I did. And it's been a wild ride and I really have appreciated how much I've learned from each one of you, because I am an engineer. And, boy, I understand the numbers, so thank you for that, Victor. But Vincent called in July and said, "Mom, you shouldn't run for school board again." And that's what this is, because I'm gonna be a grandma. And he and his wife live in California. He's a helicopter pilot in the Marine Corps and he's gonna be deployed in May, so your prayers are welcome. I don't cry. Okay, but for you all, BBF Local. It talks about ethics and it talks about what your roles are to be going forward. I want you to go back and read them. You're gonna look at board policy next month. I want you to go back and look at what it is your roles are supposed to be. But the things I challenge you to do and really focus on is, two of the things it says that the board members will not do is, "I refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole." I want you to remember that. I want you to be continually guided by what is best for all the students in this district. We saw numbers and information tonight that you're gonna be pushing and pulling on how we're gonna be going forward in this district. And I want you to remember, it's all students, all the time. Thank you.
Excellent. Sure, what would you like to do? We can stand?
You want us to stand?
You want to stand?
Yeah.
Sure. Well, we can do that. While Mrs. Barrett goes and retrieves something right now, we... Mr. Harris, Mr. Vice President, we have one recognition on the table for this evening. And we would like to recognize the distinguished service as School Board Trustee and School Board President, Dr. Valerie Yocan. I have a plaque because it wouldn't be government service if we didn't give you a plaque on the way out the door. But it does say, too, "Dr. Valerie Yocan, for her years of dedicated service to the education of our children. College Station ISD Board of Trustees, 2008 to 2017. Board President, 2011 to 2017." So I'd like to present this to you. I'd just like to say briefly before we get started, and embarrassing you, that it's been a tremendous honor to work with you and to work for you in the years that I have, especially the last three and a half years as superintendent. More than just a board president, you've been a leader and, to me, you've been a mentor and a friend. And your ability to work with myself and the senior staff here and work with the board, the rest of the members of the board, to come together as a team and tackle real issues for this community has been outstanding. I know that you, growing up, you moved around a lot. And you talk about that and some of the difficult situations that we go through. But for you and your husband, John, to come and choose this community and settle here and for both of you to pour into the lives of people in your church and this community and this school district has been... We are all better for it. I know personally I am better for it in my position. The school board is better for your service and our community is as well. We are gonna miss you. I will miss you. And we wish you the very best in what's coming forward. And you have a pretty exciting next chapter in your life, which I think Carol's gonna talk about just a little bit.
I've known Valerie a long time. A long time. We've been through a lot together. And little did we know that we would end up on the school board together, but we spent a lot of time on PTO boards together and family time together and neighbors together and so many different things. But these last years on the school board with Valerie have been so rewarding and I don't know that the community could possibly understand the time that she's given to the schools, to the kids, to the administration. We have a huge hole to fill with her because she gives time that no one sees and time that we just... Things get done and we appreciate that very much. And Valerie, for me personally, you know I love you and you know that I'll keep you close and probably still call you for advice when this last year that I serve. And we all know that I don't like the microphone, by the way. But we do have something to send on your way that we all contributed to, to make sure that the next phase, you're well-prepared. There's a book in there on how to babysit your grandmother. That is quite fascinating. And things in there that will help you when your grandchild comes to see you. And there's even a bag in there when you need to go quickly out to see your grandchild. I think I'm gonna read what we wrote to her. "We chose the book, 'The Giving Tree,' and I don't know if any of you are familiar with this, but the sacrifice that the tree makes for the little boy is much what I think about you and that we think about you." It says, "Valerie, thank you for your countless ways you have served CSISD and the community. Your extraordinary leadership, vision, hard work, and commitment to educating CSIS students each day, each life, each hour is evident. We are grateful for your attention to detail and always expecting a deep level of granularity as we work through the challenges of a fast-scoring school district. While you will be greatly missed, our students, teachers, and staff will benefit from your devoted service for years to come." And this is from your favorite board members, and each has written their own comment. Next.
We're gonna miss you. And personally, I want to thank you and say in front of everyone here how much you've meant to me, but I... They'll all get a chance to say their piece, but also to us as a group. The last, for me, I guess it's been seven and a half years that I've been on the board and you've been there the entire time. And the thing I'm most grateful for was your willingness to sacrifice your time and to put your talents to work for the betterment of our district and our community as a whole. And oftentimes, that was difficult, but I was always appreciative of your willingness to do it. And it's because we, as a group, thought you were the best person for the job. So thank you. That's all. Thank you.
I'll stand away from the mic. You know, I think, as Quinn put it earlier when we were sitting around the table, you know, when we all got... We know no other way other than you being in charge. And I feel incredibly blessed for that, for the last four years, I guess, that I've been on the board. And I remember the very first time we walked back, my very first school board meeting when we were all sitting around the table at workshop and I said something in a joking way and you gave me the stink eye and kind of put me in my place about, this is maybe not the right time to say that. And I've learned an enormous amount and I admire you a tremendous amount. I admire you for your intelligence. I admire you for your service. I admire you for the effort, for the amount that you care about the kids in our district. And I would run through a brick wall for you, Valerie. I hope you know that. We appreciate you. We're gonna miss you. of one person, was to look at what is going to be their signature brand, what is there going to be, their colors and mascot. And I'm pleased to announce to the school board trustees and to the community that the colors, she's just going to see if I'm going to do it or not, Welborn will be the Warhawks, and they will be gold and black. So congratulations to Welborn Middle School, the Warhawks. I like to call them the Wardhogs, but they're the Warhawks, so welcome with that. And then I just wanted to talk about the naming of Elementary School Number 10. It's one of the things that we do administratively when we have our new elementary schools come on board. As you know, we have landforms that we name them after, and we've got knolls and rivers and valleys and some ridges and a lot of creeks, and so we're running out of landforms as we get more schools, and we've been really thinking, what's the, what would be the appropriate name for a 10th elementary school, the first College Station ISD property that is west of Welborn Road, west of the railroad tracks? It's our first 4A into there, and there's a significant landform that is in the western part of our school district. It happens to be the Brazos River. And is with the great fanfare and happiness that I get to announce that Elementary Number 10 will be named Riverbend Elementary. So we're excited about doing that.
Good deal.
Thank you for the golf clap. So with that, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Next is Item G, Hearing of Citizens. Do we have any cards? Okay. Then we're down to, looks like Item J-1, Consider Approval of New Administrator Contract as Recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. It is my pleasure tonight to bring forward for your consideration a new assistant principal for A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. Sabrina Pimalas has been serving in that capacity, and she has had a family relocation to the greater Houston area, and she had been making that trek every day, and it's very hard on her and her family, and she's had an opportunity now to join a district closer to her home. It left a big hole at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, but we feel like we have found the right person to fill that hole. Danny Morchat has been working with College Station ISD since 2010, primarily at Oakwood Intermediate School, where he's taught math, where he's taught social studies, he's been a math specialist. He's also worked, though, across the street at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School as a track and cross-country coach. Danny started his career in education in Bryan ISD and worked at Jane Long. He's a small business owner in his past as well. He brings a wealth of experience, an enthusiasm, and a work ethic, I think, that we're going to all be impressed with when he joins the staff, Mr. Mann's staff, at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. So, Mr. Harris, it would be the recommendation of the administration that the board hire Danny Morchat to be assistant principal for College Station ISD with his placement to be at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions?
Nothing would give me greater joy than to make the motion to approve Danny Morchat as assistant principal.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries 7-0.
I would, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, and welcome, Mr. Morchat.
Welcome, Mr. Morchat. He's joined by his wife, Jordan, as well. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Item K-1, Consideration and Action on an Order Authorizing the Issuance of Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, Appointing a Pricing Officer, and Delegating to the Pricing Officer the authority to approve the sale of the bonds, establishing certain parameters for the approval of such matters, levying an annual ad valorem tax for the payment of the bonds, and enacting other provisions related to such subject. Dr. Ely.
Mr. Harris, you can tell that was written by a lawyer. We have the opportunity tonight to refinance some bonds that were, that we sold in 2010, 2011 timeframe for some significant savings to College Station ISD and the taxpayers in this district. We have with us tonight Victor Kuroga from Frost Bank, our financial advisor, who's going to talk about the parameters of the sale, and this is an action item. We would be looking for your approval to select Frost Bank as our officers to go forward and do a negotiated sale. If we have any other questions that have to do with the legality of this, we have Mr. Jeff Golbus here from Park Horsham McCall can answer those questions as well. Victor.
There we go. Is that better? Okay, great. Honorable present members of the board, Dr. Ely, thank you for having me here this evening. For the record, my name is Victor Kuroga with Frost, and we have the honor of representing the district as your financial advisor. As we spoke about during the workshop, we've identified about $46 million in bonds from your Series 2010-2011 bond issuances for refinancing opportunity. We're hoping to save about $3.6 million based off of the action from tonight's meeting. You would be allowing us to move forward and lock in that interest rate hopefully by tomorrow, and that'll allow us to close on this transaction by the end of this calendar year, because some big federal tax law changes will be impacting our ability to be able to refinance bonds moving forward, starting in the new calendar year. The action we take tonight would delegate the authority to Dr. Ely or Mr. Martindale to sign the final documents once we lock in the interest rate tomorrow. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Victor. Are there any questions?
Saving the district $3.6 million should be a good first motion for a board member.
A motion to move? No, what do I say?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries 7-0. Thank you for saving us a lot of money.
Thank you.
Okay, Item K-2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Related to the Annual Financial and Compliance Report. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. One of the duties of a board of trustees is to annually audit the finances of the school district and to contract with an independent auditor to do such of a financial accounting. Our fiscal year end is August 31st of 2017, and so we have our independent auditor who is here. We have Shelby Lackey, who is a new, one of the new partners at her firm, which is Weaver and Tidwell, who's been doing our audits for the past few years, and she is here to share the good news of the audit and our unmodified, clean opinion, and talk a little bit about what they found and share that with us. So Shelby, welcome.
Better?
Yes, thank you.
The first few pages are the independent auditors' report, which is a bunch of verbiage, as Dr. Ely said, where we issued an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. The next set of few pages are management's discussion and analysis, which is about a 10,000-mile view of what happened throughout the district during 2017. I will point you to page 17, which is your statement of net position. It is on page 17. That is the set of financial statements that you see once a year. That takes your monthly financial statements and modifies them from modified accrual to full accrual. So you'll see long-term assets and long-term liabilities in this statement that you would not normally see as you make decisions on a monthly basis. I would point out that net position of $97 million on this page is not fund balance, so do not get those confused. They are measured very differently. Excuse me? I know, it is. But it's not liquid, so different measurement. Page 20 is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. You can see the district's general fund is where your general operations happen for the most part. You have $42.8 million in assets, mainly your cash and investments and receivables. You can see liabilities of $4.8 million, mainly your accounts payable and accrued wages, your deferred inflows, excuse me, your unavailable property taxes and charge money of $2 million, resulting in fund balance of $35.9 million. The debt service fund is where you set aside those property tax revenues to pay down your bonded debt, which will have some savings in the near future, of $8 million, mainly there, again, cash and investments, some unavailable property taxes resulting in restricted debt service of $7.8. Capital Projects Fund is where you set aside those bond proceeds to build buildings and buy land so that you can service your district. You can see $86.4 million in assets there, mainly cash, some payables to the tune of $8.4 million, resulting in restricted fund balance for capital projects of $78 million. Everybody's favorite page is page 24. You can see your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Your general fund had revenues of $103 million, mainly state and local monies, expenditures of $100 million, mainly your payroll to the tune of about $60 million. You had increased fund balance of $2.9 million during the year. Debt Service Fund, again, where you set aside those debt, the property tax made to pay down your debt. You had $30.8 million in revenues, mainly your property taxes. You made your debt obligations of 30, up to $30 million. And then you all did a refinancing, just as you talked about tonight. You did one of those last year as well and saved the district some money there, and you added $1 million to fund balance for the debt service fund. Capital Projects Fund had some interest earnings, and you put a lot of capital to work. You spent $60 million in capital outlay. You also issued bonds last year, so you had new building bond money at work. You increased the Capital Projects Fund by $9.6 million. The total non-major columns that's listed there, for the most part, are local, state, and federal grants that come in and out through the main, throughout the year. They're really mostly spent down during the current period. The notes to the financial statements did not change significantly this year. A couple of years from now, you'll see a little bit of an overhaul for other post-employment liabilities being reported, kind of like pension was last, I think we're in year three now, so about three years ago. Dr. Ely, I'm sure would like to see G-1, is page 54. You can see your budget versus actual last year. Final budget ended up believing that you would have a loss of $731,000, and y'all were able to add $2.9 million to the budget, or, excuse me, to fund balance. You had some extra revenues in there from property tax and state foundation, and you carved your expenditures to offset that as well. So you ended up adding $2.9 million to revenues. As I say each year, my favorite page of the entire report is page 83. It's your good executive summary. If you thought somebody might ask you how your audit went, this would be your favorite page. We as auditors issued an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, on the financial statements during the current period. We did not see any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies during the year, nor did we see any non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. You all expend $750,000 or more in federal grants, so you're required to have a single audit under uniform guidance. The major programs that we audited this year were Title I and Head Start. We issued an unmodified opinion and compliance to them as well, and we did not see any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So kudos to Mike and Deborah and their team for doing what they can to make sure controls are in place and operating the way they should be, and we appreciate their hospitality when we're here, and they're very good about getting us what we need and getting us in and out the door, and we're thankful for that. Very prepared and very easy to deal with, so we thank you. I had entertaining questions anybody might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I would just like to echo those thanks to Mike Martindale, Deputy Superintendent, CFO, and Deborah Parks for her work as Director of Business Services in her department. They are very good at what they do, and I'm glad that it's such a great working relationship with you and your firm, and doing what you do to keep us on the straight and narrow and keep us with money in the bank. Thank you.
I think we need to actually approve the audit, so we'll need a motion to do that.
I'll move that we approve the annual financial and compliance audit report for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2017.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries 7-0. Okay, so we, yes, thank you very much. Okay, we are down to K-3, Consider Approval of Request for Bid to Purchase Computer Workstations. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. This is for both A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School for a current technical lab at each of those schools. Been identified with needing new computers. These will be paid for using federal Perkins dollars to the tune of $51,400 from AVNEX. It'd be the administration's recommendation that we move forward with the purchase of these for these two campuses. Love to answer any questions, and Mr. Martindale is up there answering questions anybody may have.
Okay, well, this is a little awkward in that I abstain from discussion and voting, but apparently I can ask if there is any discussion and call for the vote. So is there any question or discussion about this?
I would move approval as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries 6 to 0 with one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Okay, we are down to Item L-1, Consider Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price, the Total Budget, and Authorizing the Superintendent for the Central Office Modification Project. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. This is a continuation of a project under the 2013 bond, correct? For the repurposing of purchasing and warehouse facilities. You are, everybody that's in this room, as a result of that project, that was, this is a repurposing of a warehouse facility. One of the things that we, to facilitate movement throughout the entire central office, is we would like to be able to get another pathway, to be able to move from the front of the building back here, and so that is what we have for your consideration this evening. With more information on this project is John Hall, Executive Director for Facilities. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Harris, members of the board. As Dr. Ely stated, one of the major projects identified in the 2013 bond package was for the renovate and repurpose the current warehouse and purchasing building project. So that's, that's a lot of words for the three-phase project that we used up here to renovate this entire warehouse section where the new boardroom is right now. We also picked up a new server room and reworked the old purchasing building back there that we call the technology building now. So, and we're just getting that finished up. Everything is looking really, really nice over there, but we did identify an additional project as we were going through all these renovations, and that is this additional piece that would create a central corridor from, through the old section of the building back here to access the new section. So some of you tried to find your way back here to the building for the first time or two. You could probably agree that it needed a little help for wayfinding there. So, so this, this Agenda Item represents the work related to preparing the guaranteed maximum price and total project budget for this renovation project, which would be funded through 2013 bond funds. I have included a sketch in the Agenda Package for your clarification if you need to take a quick peek at it, but basically it's taken out the old ACR, a couple of closets, and a tiny restroom kind of back through there, tearing out the walls and creating a corridor all the way through there, which is right in the center of the building. The GMP for the Central Office Modification Project was based on requests for competitive seal proposals, which were advertised to the public as required by statute. The construction manager at risk, Pepper Lawson Construction, coordinated the competitive seal proposal process for this work, and Theo Rouse and Tom Stewart from our Construction Services Office were present as the bids were received and tabulated on December 7th, 2017. In consultation with CSISD and VOKE Architects, Pepper Lawson Construction has reviewed the final final scope of work, reputation of subcontractors, quality of materials specified, and other relevant factors in arriving at the GMP for this project. And Pepper Lawson Construction proposes a GMP for this project in the amount of $127,353. A summary of the proposed total project budget is also listed, which includes the GMP, and also A&amp;E Architect and Engineering and Professional Fees, project contingency, and relocation services and temporary storage, all with the corresponding amounts for a grand total proposed project budget of $145,178. And once again, this would be covered from 2,000 bond savings from previous projects. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price of $127,353 from Pepper Lawson Construction and the total project budget in the amount of $145,178 for the Central Office Modification Project. It is further recommended that the superintendent or his designee be authorized to sign any necessary documents to implement the guaranteed maximum price, and that the Board of Trustees authorizes the commencement of the work associated with this project. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. Any questions?
I have one quick question. I'm sure you've worked this thing backwards and forwards, but I'm just curious of the plumbing. There's a pretty good number in there for plumbing, and I'm wondering why we're... Are we taking plumbing out?
We are. We're having to cut and cap. There's a small restroom that used to be in the back of Dr. Ely's office.
I just wasn't sure. I was curious.
That's exactly it. And there's a little bit in the walls. We're gonna have to rework a vent or two, I think, so... But that's the reasoning for that plumbing number.
Okay.
Move approval as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries seven zero. Okay, that takes us down to M-2. Okay, the board will meet in executive session to discuss the superintendent mid-year review. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personnel Matters Closed Meeting Exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. And so the board will now retire to executive session, and then we will return to adjourn when we're finished with that.
We will... Don't anticipate any more action tonight, but you're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Okay, we are back into regular session, and we are adjourned.